Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Board of Selectmen in the town of Norwood. Today is Tuesday, August the 13th at 6:30 PM the year's 2024. I am seeing a quorum present of the Board of Selectmen call a meeting to order. Tonight's meeting is taking place in the Harry Butters Selectmen's Chambers in the Norwood Town Hall at 566 Washington Street. The meeting is also being recorded by Norwood Community Media for broadcast purposes. And so I'd like to begin the meeting with our traditional Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have several appointments and items of new business for consideration, but I'm going to begin by trying to mark off some of our old business and housekeeping items. First up, we have the warrant signature update submitting notification of reviewed and approved warrant reports signed by the board's representative. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I am going to, because we have three minutes, I'm going to jump all the way down to list to something that I think will go by really quickly. We're going to jump all the way down to a late item. This is item 3 dot 19 for a late agenda item of the Norwood Recreation Department submitting a request to place a banner on the poles on Washington Street between Vernon and Day Streets from Friday, August 16th to Monday, September 9th, 2024 to promote Norwood Day. Sponsors along with the event time date festivities. The request also includes the closing of Washington Street from Guile to Manhattan Streets and Cogge Street between Manhattan and Central Saturday, September 7th from 5 AM until 3:30 PM. Pleasure the board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous, so that one carries as well. All right. We've got two minutes. Can we bring them in?
It's not only having your kids out.
Ah, okay. So, all right. Hello. So tonight, our first appointment is with Mr. John Grove, and it's going to be a discussion of the fire bell restoration project. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me. When I last appeared before all of you last October, it was seeking your permission to apply for a grant to have the Washington Number Seven Fire Bell, which we removed from the Carillon in August of 2022. That grant was granted, we removed it, it's in storage. The project that I came to for you in October was to seek restoration of that bell and at the same time restoration of the Number Ten Bell in front of the Public Safety Department. So, one of the things that CPA asked me to do after they approved this, it went to town meeting, it was approved at town meeting, so the funds are now appropriated for this year, and we're in the process of getting bids in from two prospective companies to do the work. However, CPA thought I should come before you and seek permission to mount the bell on town property, and that's what tonight's little briefing is about. So I've got you a slide here, a little slide presentation. Lee Leach, our Caroliner, found this picture from 1928. This is probably not the fire bell being put into the Carillon, but it's one of the 60 bells, and we know that that bell went in at the same point in time, okay? So I thought you'd like to see that picture. This is the removal on August of 2022. This is where it currently is in the DPW, it's on a flat. This is the proposed site. So I've tried to put as many legends on this as I could. I'm standing on the St. Catherine's side of Washington Street, so I'm looking east, and this is between Cappy's Coin Store and where we are, the Town Hall. Mark Ryan, Kristen Phelps, and I walked this site in May, just for Mark's blessing that, yeah, we could get it here, it would be perfectly fine, all we would need to do is remove the bench you see right there, where it says future site of Washington Number Seven Fire Bell. There is a concrete pad that the bench sits on. We don't know if that's going to be sufficient for the bell, most likely not. It'll probably take a bigger footprint. So, this is a close-up of it. I photoshopped out where the bench sits right now, so that's showing the pad as it looks if the bench wasn't there, but that will give you a view of the site itself. There's stairways from right at the corner of Town Hall, right one next to Cappy's and one in the center, so there's parking, public parking right near the site of the bell. There is, you want to go to the next one? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had the curb cut one. But there's also a curb cut there for wheelchair access across, from east side of Washington Street to west side of Washington Street. Once we have the pad decided, we have a choice. We could use the concrete that the picnic benches, the picnic type benches are on, or this is being used around town, as you can see, at Alaviso's Park and Lothrick Ritch's Park, right there at Bond Street and Washington Street. This would be a sample of, this is a sign at Peswick Park, so this would be the historical signage we would put next to the bell. So that's going to take up some of that pad space as well, so we might have to do a bigger footprint there. But that's basically what it would look like, and the signage, the content on the signage will be written by Patty Fanning and Mike Chisholm. Mike Chisholm's our local historian with the firefighters, he's on duty tonight, or he'd be here. And we're probably a year away from getting this work done. Once the bell select, the vendor to restore the bells is selected, they have to be shipped out to Ohio, that could be a three or four month process. The vendor is doing all of that, taking possession of the bells, taking them to Ohio, bringing them back and reinstalling them. So we've got some time to decide about the padding, and we've got some time to decide about the signage. So that's what I want to let you know. This is our proposed site, Mark Ryan's blessed it. CP C looked at this same presentation and kind of knew, but they said, we need to get the Board of Selectmen, it's their property.
Great, thank you.
Questions?
Any questions?
Great job, John. I got a question. Why is it going in front of the corner there at Town Hall? Why not in the common?
Because, I'm glad you asked that question, I should have told you. Behind, where I was standing to take that first picture is where the actual firehouse was, where it was hung originally. So this bell will be mounted right across the, on the east side of Washington Street. St. Catherine's Rectory is where the fire station was. So it's as close as you could get in proximity to where it had hung since 1833.
We discussed this earlier in the year too, and I think a lot of people felt that there's a lot on the common, kind of takes away from it. I was just talking about, I'm a new guy, so.
But it was, but it was discussed, and that was the other thing.
Sure, thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Ms. Grove.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is great. It's great to get these updates from you, and we appreciate your effort.
Very much. Your help is appreciated too. Thank you.
And Mr. Chisen's effort, and give him our thanks, please.
Will do.
Excellent Photoshop skills, too.
No.
No.
Very amateurish.
Once you show aptitude, Tony's going to ask you to put something together now for something else.
You know, I'm enjoying this, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Now, do we need to take any formal motion from us?
If you're willing to, to approve the placement of the bell there, subject to the rest of the process and DPW being okay with it, that way they know that they are able to forward.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the sighting of the Washington Number Seven Fire Bell at this designated spot on Washington Street in between Town Hall and Cappy's.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Sad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and all opposed? It's unanimous. All right. So with that, it looks like I've got maybe five minutes before our next appointment. Let's see if we can chip through some of the approvals. Jump down to 3.2. One-day liquor permit, St. Catherine's of Santa School submitting request for a one-day liquor permit for a back-to-school barbecue event on Saturday, September 14th, 2024, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM at St. Catherine's of Santa School rear parking lot in field with approximately 400 to 500 guests expected. Pleasure the board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sad, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I also say aye, so approved, unanimous. Hello. Let's see. Why don't we try to get one more? We've got two or three minutes here. Let's do another 3.3. Same deal, one-day liquor permit, St. Catherine's of Santa School submitting request for one-day liquor permit for a purse bingo event on Friday, November 8th, 2024, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM at St. Catherine's of Santa School to 1900 Manhattan Street with approximately 100 to 150 guests expected. Pleasure the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Sad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lane, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and all opposed? Unanimous.
What is purse bingo? I have no idea.
I kind of wondered the same thing.
Does anyone know?
I think it's to win a, like, some of the specialty fancy, I'm just getting a nod, yeah, specialty fancy purse that they, you try to, try to win it.
Okay, if Christine's good with it, all good.
All right, and it looks like we don't need 3.4, that one got rescinded. Let's go ahead and get started if folks are ready for our 6:45 appointments. See, we have them here in the room. So what we have is an appointment to meet these candidates which have expressed interest in serving on the Norwood Cultural Council. This is item 2.2. We have Tara Busasab and Elliot Trace. Please correct me if I've mispronounced that. And so these are the opportunity for potential appointment to the board. So I believe, why don't we start with Tara, if you're ready?
Hi.
Yep, go ahead and take a seat at the table. So welcome, hello.
Thank you.
We'll ask you a couple of questions and also give you an opportunity to introduce yourself. So why don't we go ahead and get started? Why don't you tell us a bit about yourself and what piqued your interest about joining the Norwood Cultural Council?
Sure. So my name is Tara. I've lived in Norwood for a little over three years and have two little girls, and have just really loved the community and exploring it with them. I started taking an art class this spring, and that's where I met Ayesha at a gallery event, and she started talking to me about the council, and I had really been looking for a way to get involved and just be a part of the community in a greater capacity, so it seemed like a good thing to explore. My background, education was in art history and political science, and then professionally I worked in advertising for many years as a producer. So I have a lot of experience working in creative settings with budgets and contracts, and then the actual effort of producing a project of a creative spirit. So that's, you know, my professional background, so being able to kind of use that part of my brain for the community was an exciting opportunity to me.
Excellent. Well, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions from the board.
I'll be first. Oh, sure, okay. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
We really appreciate your interest. It's very cool that we have people that have moved here recently that are looking to get involved, so that makes me feel really good about the kind of town we are, and that, you know, your background seems like a really good fit, and, you know, I have two young kids as well. What kind of stuff do your kids like to do in town? I'm always interested in hearing.
They, we've really used, tapped in a lot to the recreation programs. They've done dance and soccer and fitness classes, so that's been like an amazing resource for them. And then just around town, like, the parks are, have been like, just great to get out of the house. They're four and two, so any opportunity I have to, like, get outside with them is welcome.
For sure.
They took part this spring in Fova's Art, Art in the Yard.
Yard Art.
Yard Art. And they, they love that. We went to the library and they just got crafting, and they ended up putting it in our backyard, so, you know, it was kind of a private installation, but
Cool.
They, they just love the libraries. There's been a lot for them.
Yeah, well, thank you for, for your interest.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming aboard. Free, not a carpetbagger yet, but you're close to it.
Yes.
But, yeah, thanks for putting your name out and volunteering, and a couple things. There's a riverwalk down in south Norwood, the turtles, the frogs, the fish, and the kids at that age get a big kick out of it.
Yeah.
And two, just get involved, let people get involved, and keep coming aboard.
I'm, I need to do that. It is, I agree, it is a great community. We feel lucky to have landed in a place like this.
That's it, mention.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I don't have any questions. Couple that have been asked, the general, and they cover things. I'd just like to see those that we might be appointing to get involved in the different town activities, and as others have already said, thank you for stepping forward. We need to get new people involved and interested in, in the community functions. I have paperwork on both of you. All I have to do is make sure when you sit in front of me, I believe it's true, because it's, because it's, because it's great for both of you.
He's been burned, he's been burned before.
And we do have two openings, so I don't have to choose, so, thank you.
I agree. I mean, both, I know Elliot, our kids are in preschool together, and we both have young kids. I can speak for myself that having young kids during COVID was especially challenging, so like, any type of program in a town where we can get out and bring people together, I think, and express yourself is like incredibly important for mental health and bringing people back into a community, so.
And you've, with your last comments there, answered the question that I had planned to ask, which was sort of what, what do you feel excited to sort of dive right into initially, and I totally agree with that.
Yeah, just, just that.
Even just used to getting back out in the community, I think a lot of people had a period of isolation to the point where you're sort of having to relearn how to reengage with people.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming in to see us tonight.
Thank you.
We are going to now meet with Elliot, so Elliot, feel free to come up. And you'll experience a very similar engagement here. We're going to ask you some questions and give you an opportunity to tell us all about yourself. So why don't you go ahead and begin?
Well, thank you for having me. I'm Elliot. I moved here in 2022 from Minnesota to teach at New York Boston. Initially, we thought Norwood was going to be where we stopped, just kind of on our way to see what happened, if we got a 10-year track job somewhere, and we ended up deciding that we love it here. As I said, our kids go to school here. I have an autistic four-year-old who has thrived for the first time at Little Mustangs more than he has anywhere else. So we already feel that we've received a lot from this community. To me, it's always important, if you love the place you live, to do everything you can to help make it the best version of itself. I mean, it's never going to be perfect, but everybody should try to make it the best that it can be. So I come from a family of artists. My father's an art professor, my sister's a landscape architect, my aunt was a ballet dancer. I'm the one with no skills. So for me, this is sort of a way of
Did you say you had no skills?
No skills.
Did you see the resume?
No artistic skills.
Okay.
So for me, this is kind of a way to engage not only with Norwood, but also with my family and that tradition of being involved in the arts.
Excellent, excellent. We'll go ahead and open for questions and comments.
That's, that's very good. Thank you again for your interest. Your resume's very impressive, and I'm happy that you're a new family and you're getting involved, you want to give back all the same things. So my only question for you is, do you have Governor Walz's cellphone number?
I actually do.
I knew you did.
Very cool.
But, yeah, thanks again for, for getting involved, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Other question, Mr. Sad?
Same as my colleague said, thanks for coming to Norwood. Love you, happy to come to Norwood, and service to humanity is the best part of life, and you'll appreciate that down the road. It's a fabulous crown jewel of the Commonwealth, and I think if you tie yourself with the Recreation Department, Sam and John, great group down there, great group, they do a lot. So get involved and take over a little bit, and we'll have some fun with it. Thank you.
And I also would like to thank you so much. I'm very excited, and I, I would argue that you do have a skill, the art of words, like, that is an art, and I handily have that covered, so I'm very excited.
I lived in high school, I had red locks and was always in a rubber band, but I generally try to keep that out. Now I suppose, now it's in the public record.
Yeah, yeah, now it's there.
Front page.
But no, this is very exciting, so we're, we're so happy to have you as an applicant, and we're so glad that you were able to come in and meet us tonight. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Now, tonight, do we want to sleep on it, or do we have an interest in making appointments? Ms. Plasko?
I was going to try to make a motion to appoint both applicants, finding both to be more than suitable for the position they've applied for, but I have a question, I don't know if the manager's able to answer. I haven't kept up that well with the Cultural Council. Are these the same period of terms? In other words, are they both going to be three years? Do we have to pick one to be two years, or one to be one year?
We have a little bit more flexibility with the, with the Cultural Council.
I'm sorry?
We have a little bit more flexibility with the Cultural Council to set the terms.
It's not set that way?
Yeah, correct, and if we were to try to keep it strict, we'd be terms on terms on terms.
I can say one appointment to appoint, I don't need to appoint two years, one year.
Correct.
I need to appoint both applicants to the Historical Commission. Cultural Council.
Throw a few other boards in there, too.
We need them both.
We can do it for one.
So we have a motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad, all in favor?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well, so that is approved. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Thanks to Ayesha and the Cultural Council for arranging meetings within a week. We got notice, and everyone was able to get in here, and sometimes, as you know, we've taken a few months for these things, so we appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Get to work now.
All right, so we can come down now to new business. Item 3 dot 1, I understand that they are also going to come in.
I believe they may be here, Madam Chair, if you want me to just check.
Yeah, so if they are, we can go ahead and invite them in. Thank you. Welcome. So I'm just going to read this item of business here. This is a common victular, it is victular, is that the pronunciation? I always feel like I mispronounce it.
I would not ask. I'd just say common vic.
Common vic.
That's what the Commonwealth does.
Very well. Common vic license for Euro and Kebab House. This is submitting an application for a common vic license for Euro and Kebab House under new ownership located at 1275 Boston Providence Turnpike in Norwood, and the applicants are here to meet us tonight. We will just take a moment. Can you introduce yourselves and then give us a little background on the request?
Yes, my name is M.D. Bashir Islam. Right now, I'm involved with like convenience store business. Now I want to move to like restaurant business too. The concept, I really liked it, that's why like I want to move into this business.
Excellent, and who are you joined by?
Hi, this is my neighbor, Muham Mustafa. I am new ownership, this, I have a lot of experience, just past one, I will try with him.
Excellent.
That's all right.
Hi, myself, Babu. I'm already into the restaurant business, so we already, we own 1947, so we're already into the restaurant business. So we just got this concept as a proper authentic Turkish cuisine, so we are very much interested to, just to give that authentic Turkish. So we're already in restaurant business, so we thought, like, you know what, why can't we start? That's, that's how we stepped into this. Yeah.
Excellent. Well, I will go ahead and open things up for questions or comments from the board. I'll start on this side, Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. Good evening. The establishment you're looking to upgrade currently has an alcohol license. Do you have one applied for that? Can you explain what's happening with that?
Not yet. So we just need to sign the lease. So we're not going to do any alcohol until we get the transfer license for the alcohol, so we're going to only sell until we get that transfer license. So right now, with the seller, we didn't close the deal yet, so it will take a while, maybe, I think, one or two months. So also, we've already applied with the liquor license. When we get the transfer license, then we're going to start with the alcohol. So right now, we don't have any license for that.
All right.
So as soon as we get the lease signed up, then we're going to start that one.
And they know that that license cannot be used?
Yeah.
By anyone?
No.
At that location, if, if you get this transfer tonight. You're not thinking of applying for that same license? You just didn't do it tonight, is that what I heard?
No, I was saying, like, we didn't sign the lease yet, so
So you don't even have a lease?
No, not, we signed the lease yet. So as soon as we sign the lease, then we're going to start the process for the transfer of the liquor license. So, but I'm aware that, you know, we're not going to sell any alcohol until we get the liquor license.
It's not like we're handling this directly. You gave us a pen, prepared floor plan, but it doesn't show me, it seems to show me, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to be looking at mostly your service area, your back room, your kitchen.
Yes.
And service area. Where are the, where's the seating, the tables in relationship to this?
You're talking about sitting tables?
I'm sorry?
You're talking about sitting tables?
Sitting tables.
Yeah, the restaurant, inside.
The restaurant, yes. Yeah, inside. It's like
Are you planning to have the same?
Yeah, like, same concept.
Setup as it's been there?
Yeah, we're not going to change anything.
Except for alcohol.
Except, like, we, like, actually, I don't think so, like, we can sell alcohol. If we can get licensed and if we get permit, then it's a different thing, you know, otherwise I don't think so we will sell alcohol.
You haven't got, you haven't got a license, I mean, you haven't got a lease, excuse me, lawyer license at the moment, but
But lease is almost done, I think, is almost like done, like, as I know. Like, we, everybody's agreed with it, now it's on paperwork, like
Have you got a purchase and sales agreement?
Sales agreement?
Yeah.
We, I think we do.
When, when would you expect to be open? Excuse me, there's a letter dated August 6th from the Board of Health, have you seen that?
Board of Health.
Yeah, but Is there anything that you have to do in that letter that's going to delay opening?
So, the August 6th is already passed, right? Like, until we get this license, we're not going to start anything, and also prior to the starting, we need to have a health checkup as well, and we are aware about that as well. So until all things roll out, so we're not going to start anything, like, you know, operation or anything like that.
All right. The other thing, supposed to be part of the application, it's supposed to be a list of your, itemized list of your fixtures, your equipment, and, and cost investment in those? That's not included in your package yet? Do you have that?
Yeah. The thing is, like, we're not changing anything.
It might have been part of the purchase and sale agreement.
Yeah, so I mean, like, the sale is like, we're not doing any changes, it's just a change of ownership. So we're going to change the, we're not going to change anything, the menu, or the end toys, or, we're not going to change anything. It's exactly as it is, just a change of ownership. Not the menu, or the recipe, or the food, or nothing, but just like, we're just buying But just like, we're just buying a business from a seller, that's all it is.
Nothing further at this time, thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Lane?
Thank you, thank you for being here, Mr. Plasko, maybe actually you can help me with this, or Ms. Mizuka. So you're, you're buying the business, but not with the, the all alcohol?
Yeah.
I don't understand why you're not, like, the, um.
Yeah, actually, that's a, that's a good question, if I may.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not just opening a new business, you're buying their business?
Yes, yes.
Which has an alcohol license?
Right.
Yes, but they're not using the license, and I think technically we'll have the license on longer time, but we will follow the same concept whatever they are following, probably not using the license in future.
Well, we want you to use it if you have it.
Yeah, like, if.
I just think the whole process.
That, that is our plan, but.
Yeah. So the.
But it was like four months.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not implying you did anything wrong or your approach is wrong, just like talking about the, uh, the Shamrock. That, that business was sold with the license.
Yeah.
Still hasn't opened up, but I mean, that was part of the deal, so that just got transferred to new owner, right?
It is, there's some paperwork that has to happen, I think what they're alluding to is they may not actually wanna pay for, purchase the liquor license if they end up not wanting to do it, they wanna transfer the business and start operating. They don't necessarily have to continue with the liquor license, now for a bar, obviously you're gonna buy with the liquor license.
But we want that in use, right?
Correct, and we can go through our process to bring it back, because before the board now was just the common vic license. In theory, if somebody were to stop using the lic, the liquor license, they're supposed to turn that over, but as we know, that's a let the, uh.
Yeah.
Let the process.
Yeah, but I think this is different, if they're buying the corporation, the corporation has the license. And they haven't applied for it, and according to 138, we have to have a advertised hearing, notify what is and all that.
Correct, that likely needs to happen, what's before you though is the common vic license.
So that was going to be, my question was, is it procedurally okay to have the common vic happening? Like Mr. Plasko was saying, they're, they're taking the corporation.
Sure, I mean, what I would do is contingent on the, um, the lease being signed, prove, prove the common vic contingent on the lease, because then they're leasing the business, the liquor license doesn't necessarily become legal with that. And as you said, there's a process to transfer that.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing, you would think they'd have a lease, a conditional lease on them successfully, successfully getting the, uh, license.
Yeah, I think, as you know, sometimes it's always a matter of how these all fall into alignment where, you know, banks wanna give money, but the banks wanna see that you have appropriate licenses.
Sure.
Town doesn't wanna give the licenses until you have a lease, bank doesn't sign off on the lease because you don't have a license, and it's sometimes a little bit of a runaround, different people have different lawyers advising them in different situations where they say, well, until you get a license, don't, don't sign a lease.
The commercial analogies are used to giving conditional license, leases.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, I think so, so this change, you're buying the business, it's not contingent on the, the liquor license coming. If, if it does get transferred, you wanna give it a shot maybe, but your business plan isn't dependent on it necessarily?
Yeah, because it, it will take time to transfer the liquor license, it's a longer process.
Well, and they could sell it to someone else, right?
They could.
They could, but it comes with the corporation, I think, like, if you want to do it, go with the license and, yeah, we can take it too.
Wait, okay.
They could in theory buy the business and the guy could sell liquor license to somebody else.
The current owner's good.
Correct.
Right, yeah, okay.
So it's probably a matter of coming to terms, which is, you know, sometimes they're a little bit complicated on.
Sure, yeah, 'cause I think, you know, this group that you're buying from, they were before us a couple of years ago, Mr. Sad wasn't on the board, but.
It's a new license.
Yeah, it's relatively new, and I think their pitch was that this was gonna save our business and, you know, maybe they, maybe for other reasons they've decided to move on, but, you know, I'm not sure how much traffic they got for people specifically looking for liquor. Anyways, it's kind of besides the point, I'm offside.
Mr. Sad?
This is kind of new to me, but my, as I mentioned to the manager earlier, I think the license is primo, and if they're not gonna use it, you know, we should put a motion to pull it back in. We have to, after, after this, I would make that.
We will use it, sir, we will use it when we get permission, after it get transferred to us.
Yeah, but if they.
Because it will take time.
But if they don't give us permission or anybody, if they don't give it to you and they sell it under your feet, we're stuck in the middle of it all.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just a matter of timing, I think Mr. Plasko, given the clarification of the status, the liquor license would be appropriate, and certainly if somebody's not using it, we're gonna wanna make sure we start that process. It is possible that with the application process that in 30 days or 60 days, they'll be before us asking to formally transfer that liquor license. Common vics are a relatively low, low threshold of approval process.
No, I know, with the liquor license, the primo, we want people using them, because other people want it.
Correct.
Okay.
We want to use it, but the previous owner, like, they don't use it before, they have the license, but they, I don't think so, they never use it.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we'll talk to that pretty soon.
Yeah, for, for clarity.
Two people want.
For clarity, uh, there is a, essentially you want the licenses in use, and if they go unused for too long, the board has the authority to essentially begin a process of rescinding it for non-use in order to give it to someone who will use it. Now, our process to do that takes time also, uh, so like Mr. Sad said, it could be even if we begin that process, you know, you all could be backing for the transfer part of that well before we get done with our process, but essentially our goal, from our perspective, is to ensure the license is getting used, whether that's you all inheriting it or the, the previous folks who had left it unused for too long, we end up reclaiming it to, to put back out in the lot. Does that make sense?
If we, yeah, that's, I understand, but if we get the license, like, we definitely use it.
That's great.
Yeah, that's great.
So we just wanna use it from day one, just because we have to wait for the transfer of the license, that's why we said like, you know, we're not gonna use it until we get the transfer license.
Yeah.
That's why, like, we just wanna use it from day one, just because we don't have the transfer license.
We can operate the business, but we can't operate the license because that is not our name, after it transferred to our name, then we can operate it.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is that they wanna move forward, they're gonna move forward regardless of whether they can get the liquor license to work, that's their goal, but they're gonna move forward operating the business. Remember, as, as you've seen with the liquor applications, there's a lot of complexity to it, maybe there's something that comes up that they can't, they still are gonna move forward with the business either way, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko, do you?
Yeah, I'm still concerned, and I did have a conversation with council, but this particular point didn't come up. If they're buying, not just applying for a license, they're buying that corporation, that corp, as I said before, our corporation has that license. And I know if you read back and forth, 138 and 140, they, they mesh together when they have a liquor license. So I'm not sure that we're following the proper procedures with notifications and so forth, and if their intent is to buy the business and not the license, and the current owner is gonna sell that license, or we're gonna take it back if they're not using it. I don't know, I just don't know that we have this in the right form, and I noticed that the, um, common vicular's license isn't transferable, they're, they're all new, they're applying new, like, this is an application for license, not an application for transfer. So I, I guess we could issue a license just with the common vic.
Which, which is all that's being added.
Still very concerned about that license out there.
Yeah, there's, there's no backdoor process around getting a liquor license, there's no, we've said, A, haha, you've managed to slide one through and get it, they'll have to go through that process, and now that the board obviously being aware that we're not sure if the prior owner was actually using it, we can also start that process with the understanding that it may all resolve itself in a short period of time.
Yeah, essentially one is not dependent on the other, is my impression.
I guess right now, what's before the board is a common vic, which you have all the grounds to go ahead and grant, it doesn't automatically give you anything else other than the common vic license.
But I think, I'm a little puzzled also, like Bill, is that it's the corporation that's at that location, is that, is that store currently, it's closed now, right?
No.
It's open still right now?
Yes, they're operating, still operating, because it's still, the license is not moved, anything yet, you know, after we get the proper license, proper process is done, then we'll take over.
So is, when you talk to this current owner, is there a timeframe where the corporation or somebody has said that if you get this tonight, within a month you'll get the, will sell you the liquor license, has that been discussed?
Yes, that's, that's like, that's it, like, then, like, after everything is done, paperwork's done, then we will process on the, like, liquor license, because it will transfer to different corporation, different name, you know?
No, I know that, I'm just more concerned that somebody that doesn't sell it to you and sells it to somebody else for a hundred grand.
No, that's, that's.
That's documented.
That's documented, is that, like, is documented, that's the deal we have with the current owner.
So we can make a motion somewhere, as a motion that we can prove this pending that 30 days from now you get a liquor license, PNS?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I would say something along like, start, start the process of that transfer.
Well, yeah, something.
Although I think they're not really required to do that, there still could be a situation where they get the license and decide to turn it in. Again, all, all the board's approving is them to contingent on a lease, which I would do, sell food at that location.
No, I know, but I think just them buying the corporation.
Sure, but let, let me give you an example of where, whether they're buying the corporation or leasing the corporation or not, if the current owner has stopped selling alcohol, and that's news to us, I haven't heard that, to tell them, well, wait till you get the liquor license before you can take the business over, presents a little bit of a hurdle for them to be able to get in there and start operating and covering their, uh, their costs. Current owner likely wants to get out of there, we don't want the shop closing for a while just because we're all waiting on a liquor license. So what's before the board now is just the common vic license, which continued on a signed lease, I think you've got it approved. We will, we'll have to look into the liquor license process, they still have to go through that process. If they chose not to, and their owner turned the license back to the town, or they somehow decided to sell it to somebody else and doesn't sound like that's the case, they're still gonna have a license to operate the restaurant business, they've been a restaurant for most of the time.
No, I understand that, but that liquor license is the premium part of the business.
Yeah, that is part of the, part of the deal, like, we have, like, they will transfer the liquor license to us and we will use it. But it will take a longer process and they just wants to move out, that's why, like, we can, without license, without proper process, we can still run the business, food business, but can't sell alcohol before the total process is done.
No, no, I understand that, my concern is if he, whoever has that license now says he doesn't want, they don't wanna sell it to you, and they sell it for 50 grand on the street.
We, we have a written agreement.
Yep.
Like a purchase and sell agreement.
Okay.
Like, they are, like, they will start doing the process after all paperwork's is done.
And will we get a copy of that when you come back for a liquor license? To verify that?
Yes.
Okay, that's a little.
Yeah.
And remember, the owner can't sell it to anyone else without somebody coming back for the board.
No, I know.
That, that always has to go through the board no matter what.
Okay.
I don't have another question, is you gonna make a motion?
I'll retain a motion.
A move to approve the common vicular's license condition on, with the license not to be, what's the word I want? Presented, distributed.
Issued.
Until the applicant has, uh, from the Board of Health indicate, that we have confirmation from the Board of Health that they have complied with all the conditions set in their letter of August 6th, 2024, that the, um, applicant has also submitted to this office a copy of the lease for 1275 Boston Providence Highway.
I'll second it.
Second?
Yep.
All right, motion made, and seconded by Mr. Lane, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed, all right, unanimous, all right.
Thank you. I think, I think, one thing, I think he forgot to mention, I think the lease is done, as I know, like, uh, I think lease is done, I think I have the copy, like, in my email, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, as soon as you have a signed copy, just make sure it gets to the staff in the office.
Okay, I will take a look, if I have it on my email, I will definitely.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't think I can open it until I get that lease, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I don't, do you let people just go into your property before lease is signed?
You guys good?
Yeah.
So, so we're also.
I'll say, yes, thank you.
Last housekeeping items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chair?
Yes.
Now that, after that discussion, we're made clear, aware that the all alcohol license at 1275 Boston Providence Highway has not been used to serve the public, make a motion that we have them in for public hearing for show cause, whether or not should be revoked.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Sad, discussion on the motion?
Nope, I think it's a good point.
Yeah, one way or another, the license is going to go into use.
There you go.
They may get it all settled, but we have to keep our wheels turning at the same time.
All right, so a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed, so unanimous, so we will get that on the schedule. All right, so let's drop down, speaking of licenses and liquor, we have a couple more liquor permits. So we'll drop to item 3.5, one day liquor permit hometown arcade, submitting request for a one day liquor permit for the second annual first responders night out at hometown arcade, 61 Endicott Street on Monday, September 9th, 2024, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM with approximately 100 to 150 guests expected, pleasure the board.
That's our, you're talking about launch?
No, this is.
No, we're talking about the arcade.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The launch folks, I think they pulled their application, as you said.
Yes.
She said they pulled it out.
Yeah, that was full.
Yeah. Motion approved.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Sad, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Another one day liquor permit for Norwood Elks, submitting request for a one day liquor permit for an outdoor fundraising at the Norwood Elks, 152 Winslow Avenue, the baseball field on Saturday, August 24th, 2024, from 12:00 PM until 4:00 PM with approximately 75 guests expected, pleasure the board.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Lane, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Sad, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. All right, now we're gonna go down to some town common requests, we have a town common request, item 3.7, Norwood High School Prom Red Carpet Event, submitting their annual request to use the town common Dempsey Bandstand for a Norwood High School Prom Red Carpet Event on Friday, May 16th, 2025, from 5:00 PM until 6:30 PM, pleasure the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Sad, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lane, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unless that was two extensions.
What was that?
In favor of that motion? All opposed, unanimous. All right, it's town common request for outdoor worship service, this is from the Tabernacle of Holiness located at 61 Endicott Street, submitting request to hold an outdoor worship service on Saturday, August 31st, 2024, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM on the town common, pleasure the board.
I had a question on this one.
Sure.
Do we normally do services on the common?
Uh, it's allowed, I, I don't know to what extent it's been done before, there's a rosary prayer that gets done a couple times a year.
And I feel like we've approved something similar to this, but with a different organization, I can't remember which one, but it was a very similar setup.
Later on the board's agenda is a discussion of park rules and regulations, just to kind of dive into a little bit of this.
They're looking for four hours to do a service, am I on the right one? Which one are you on?
Yeah, yeah, you're on the right one.
3.8.
Sometimes, again, the, the request is inclusive of all the time that they need, setup and breakdown.
Yeah. Do we have any comments?
Does the fitness, the veterans back?
Uh, no, this one.
No, this is a outdoor worship service.
This one's on the common.
Yeah.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny made, do I have a second? Mr. Sad has seconded.
Well, so on the motion.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't allow this type of use, is that?
It, it's not that we don't allow it, it's up to the board's discretion as to what you want to allow for organized activity in the common. So remember that the common, not only being designated a free speech zone, but like any other park in town, we're all free to go and use it as we, within reason, see fit, there are some rules. Um, when we give somebody a permit, we are granting them some exclusive use of that portion of the common. In the past, the board has always tried to balance what is a, what is an appropriate size private event, even if it's open to the public, and there's no right answer. You know, we do weddings on the common, I think we've started seeing more and more, but those are usually 10 to 20 people.
Yeah.
What if somebody wanted to do a 600 person wedding at the common? I believe the board in past years has denied some wedding applications where it just looked like it was gonna be too extensive and we're tying up the common in a large portion of it. So it's really your discretion as a board, do you, what types of routine events do you feel are appropriate to close off a portion of the common for?
Okay, is that why, Mr. Plasko, is that why you're, you would be against this?
Yeah, I think the kind of activity in another period of time.
Yeah.
From my, looking at the application, one of the things that's not indicated is, unless I'm just not seeing it, is the scope of how big the service was.
How many people, it's not on there, right?
It's, it's listed, we say, you know, estimated attendance in the fourth line, and it says outdoor services, but it doesn't clarify, like, how many people does that consist of? Is your, you know, parish 10 people or 500 people? Obviously 10 people, like you say, a small wedding showing up, that's not going to heat up that much space on the common, but, um.
Yeah, and you, you know, they require electricity, does that mean music, certain things like, and I know we're gonna have this discussion later, but maybe this form isn't, needs to be tweaked too, I don't know. And do we know anything about where they have services normally?
I think this is the one that's at Endicott, right?
Yeah.
They're at the, um, the Commerce, yeah, Commerce Center.
Yeah, and then Unit 26.
Haven't really had services before.
Okay. Okay.
We've had church groups that used it for like a celebration of, I'm just afraid these churches down at the Endicott, if they don't have a sufficient facility, they're going to come asking for this all the time.
Sure.
I don't think that's a proper use for the, for the common.
Do we run afoul of any?
And you're talking four hours there, right?
Right.
Right. How long do we, how long does the, um, some of like the rosary events that we've.
The last one, the last.
Oh, I think the one that Rita does.
The group I'm talking about was a fairly long one, but we were complaints, I mean, we, we had them shortened at the last night.
That was a, um, yeah, there was an out, there was an outdoor church group that did like a service and a thing, and we got a lot of complaints about it, so we.
It was more of a big celebration though.
Yeah.
Of something, I'm, I'm afraid, I can't remember what it was, but it wasn't a worship, it wasn't.
Yeah, and the fact that it's worship or not worship, it's, it's whatever the type of event is, do we want a four hour event that is going to take up space for 50 people? That's not a town event.
Holiday weekend.
Right, and that's what we're really looking at, because remember, it's, it's reused, I mean, would we allow the Elks to do it? If they wanted to have their annual Elk celebration or the Rotary's annual celebration that said, we want to use the common for four hours and we're going to tie it up with 60, 70 people, and I'm making that number up, we might say, ah, now you're kind of taking the, the common up for quite a while. We try to keep it reasonably free. And we, we did almost allow a movie to get filmed there, but there was a larger benefit to the town. We're collecting quite a hefty permit fee. I mean, there's no easy, uh, easy way to sort of split the, uh, split the bait.
One adult favor the public.
The other trick is the application, it doesn't kind of say one way or another where it's, whether it's open to the public or not, it's not from my reading.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're always open to the public, um, on a public park. It's just, we would reasonably restrict interference or whatnot, you know, something like that with an event.
Mr. Sad?
My, um, I've never heard of this parish or church or group, but my thought is, why wouldn't they use Chapel Street? It's not, it's a perfect park or whatever.
I think you still, so we have a couple, it's a great point. We have a Chapel Street request or two on the agenda, and later on, we're going to discuss that as well. Regardless of where it is, it's how much space in a public park do we want to take up? And then we're going to talk, well, should we be charging fees for some of these events? Because it's, it's one thing for a 12 person wedding, uh, the patriotic rosary that happens a couple times a year, that's a wonderful little ceremony. It's little, it's town use or open use. And then when you start having a lot of organized groups use these spaces, it can, it can present a challenge, somebody who may just want to use the common. And again, there's no, there's no easy answer.
No, I'm understanding that the commons are more practical.
Well, one is, one is what's the use and the other is what's a proper place? So even what's a proper use, might be a proper use at a park, but not downtown. And I don't think downtown on the common is proper.
No, that's why I think the Chapel Street might, it might have 50 or 100, I don't know, but if we found out and then make a contingent of a number, not then.
So right now, we've had a motion to deny made and seconded. Is there any further discussion before I move to vote? All right, so motion to deny, all in favor of denying?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous.
Can we approach this group and ask them if they're interested in the Chapel Street part?
Yeah.
And then, I know we don't meet before this event, but.
We can. Would somebody want to make a motion to approve them for Chapel Street? If that works for them, contingent on staff reviewing and making sure all, all recommendations are made.
I'll make a motion to.
We can offer it, but it may not work for them because they said they need electricity.
Right, and that's not, not generally available, so.
Well, just in case, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this applicant for the same use, but on the Chapel Street part.
Yeah, but I do, we second that.
All right, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous, all right.
Okay, Christine, you'll be.
Reach out. Thank you. All right. Moving down, now we're at item 3.9. This is regarding the Disabled Veterans Park, a request for a fitness class. Submitting request to use Disabled Veterans Park Chapel and Berwick Streets for an outdoor fitness class beginning on Thursday, August 22nd, and continuing for six consecutive Thursdays from 6:00 PM until 7:00 PM with approximately five attendees expected. Pleasure of the board.
Motion approved.
Motion made. Do we have discussion or seconds?
I, I would.
Did you have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Second for the purpose of discussion?
I, I would be opposed to it because we've denied these before. We recently, only recently denied the movie night and, uh, it's just, the only thing is, um, to get tech to go, they don't need a permit. Our park permit policy as it stands, it says 20 people or more. So if he lives with the five, doesn't even need our permission. We might want to change our parking, our, our, uh, rules and regulations, but as they stand today.
Yeah, I, I would agree, and here's the challenge where all the permit really does is we, we, they have a reasonable, they're entitled to that space. So if somebody else was using the space, we would say, hey, can you move on? They're permitted to use the space from 5 to 8 or whatever it happens to be.
Yeah, but we, if we approve it when it's not necessary and we're getting down and splitting hairs here, we're technically allowing them on, inviting them on, increasing any potential liability, something happens. If they just come on on their own, we have a lot less liability.
Can we just take no action and just tell them, do it on your own?
As long as he doesn't go over 20.
Yeah. And just, don't take it up.
I, I mean, you can move no action or you can deny it.
I'd probably be in favor of no action, because if we, I'm worried if we deny it, it's going to cause them to not do their activity, which they, as five people, can just go do.
We can deny and send them a letter and say, if you just want to be there, you can be there. But if 500 other people want to be in the park, we're not going to go there and say, hey, clear the space for these six people. I don't think that's a problem with Chapel Street.
I like to withdraw my motion, Chairman.
Motion withdrawn. So instead, are we just going to leave on the table or do I have a motion to deny?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny made. And a second to deny. And a second to deny, so.
I'll, I'll second that because, as I said before, we have turned down similar requests, although I think they can still show up.
Yeah. Motion to deny made, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right.
And we'll just let them know they can do it.
Yeah, but, yeah, please reach out to them, communicate that as a body of five people, since they're below our threshold to acquire permit, that they can use it as five people instead. All right. All right, item 3.10, Central Buick GMC Inc., dealership name change. So submitting a request for Central Buick GMC Inc., located at 70 Boston Turnpike, Providence, Massachusetts, to amend the name of the dealership from Central Buick GMC Inc. to Central GMC comma Inc. No other changes are noted.
The effect is the Buick dealership is going away.
Yeah.
So they're changing everything.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. All right, item 3.11, this is an IT request to surplus. This is from Sean Warnock, Director of Information Technology, submitting a request to surplus and recycle a list of items that are no longer functioning due to irreparable damage. I have a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Sad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, so do I have any other short things? I think we're now starting to get into discussion and vote topics. So we are going to start with item 3.12. This is regarding the water tanks, the SRF. I assume, Mr. Manager, that you're going to field this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just perfunctory. We need the board to vote to authorize the manager to file for the water tank SRF loan. This is the, um, the project was approved at town meeting. We were successful in getting into the state's revolving loan fund. We just need the board to authorize the manager to file for the tank loan on behalf of the town and sign any documents required thereof.
All right, pleasure of the board or discussion?
Just, uh, just to manage a point of information, is there like a percentage rate or like we go on the street?
Uh, it's, so it's subsidized, so it ends up being below market. And then the benefit of the SRF loan is we don't actually begin paying for the project until it's completed. So instead of that debt service starting right now, the project's done three, four, five years from now, that's when we actually start paying, so maximize our money. Yeah. That's, I've never heard it described that way, but I'd say that's pretty accurate.
Motion approved.
Very much, and being by Mr. Sad.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Now we're going to go down to item 3.13, ARPA adjustment. This is another item for vote of the board. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the request of Norfolk County, who is handling the pass through for ARPA funds, we're just requesting that the board modify the ARPA plan, if you will, such exists, regarding the use of ARPA funds to just move money from projects that didn't spend it to projects that are on the list that have, um, are above where our initial estimates were. And the motion would be to amend the November 30th, 2021 infrastructure funding vote to include 1.42 million dollars for Westover Parkway Culver and 230,303 dollars for the Robinwood Drain Project.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Plasko. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, unanimous. Item 3.14, this is regarding the Assistant Director Health and Human Services. We had some questions come in about this, so we wanted to bring it up for discussion tonight. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Believe the board knows, but I am sad to let you know, if you don't know, that Teddy Mulholland, our veterans agent, will be retiring.
Spoiler alert.
Uh, yeah, spoiler alert, right? If you didn't know, Teddy is retiring. I think he actually tried to retire last year, and I played the game of not meeting with him and not wanting to talk to him, telling him things would take some time. And I finally, he cornered me in my office and I unfortunately had to have the conversation, but he has served us loyally for many years. Going back about five or six years ago, even prior to that, what many towns did, they would dump a lot of mundane duties onto the veterans agent. And of course, we thank Teddy for his service to our country as well, but a lot of mundane duties would be dumped in. And about five or six years ago, we pulled away parking tickets from the veterans office and we pulled out the transfer program, which is the, uh, it was a cab discount program we used to run. These duties were put in there years ago to just fill the time in the office, so to speak. So we pulled them out to work on something down the road once we were able to find a way to restructure a little bit and give the veterans agents some more meaningful duties. And a couple of years ago, we put together our, um, our strategic staffing plan. We were going to follow suit with a lot of other towns, move veteran services administratively under the Health Department, mainly because we've been consolidating the departments of one and two that we have throughout town. We've done probably half a dozen in the last 10 years for administrative reasons mostly. It ends up being difficult to have extra departments open for payroll and your training, additional clerks on how to process payroll. So Teddy and I worked on the job description with Stacy and reimagined it that the veterans agent, obviously continuing their role, but would take on some additional duties helping to craft our human services programs, which are sort of scattered among a couple of different departments. Most towns' veteran services falls into a human services or youth and family services department. We don't have a youth and family services. So there's going to be no change for the veterans using that services. We're just looking to give some meaningful additional duties to the veterans agent as opposed to what for a long time had been, um, I don't want to say meaningless, but parking tickets is not exactly, what's that?
Unrelated.
Unre, certainly unrelated, and it's funny because the state actually says that they want any duties the veterans agent has to be related. I don't know how we got away with parking tickets and the cab program for so many years, but we did. But we want them to be related and we want them to be meaningful. We wanted to be able to give whoever the next veterans agent is a chance to be able to move up in the organization, maybe take on additional, an additional role. Unfortunately, what's happening throughout the Commonwealth, the State's Veterans Program, the Chapter 115 Program, as the cost of housing skyrockets and continues to in eastern Massachusetts, you don't have veterans eligible for that program moving into towns. You see them primarily in lower income communities and communities where housing is still reasonable. Because again, to qualify for the Chapter 115 Program, which is our direct services to veterans, you have, do have to be low income. So not to say that that doesn't happen, but certainly you're not qualifying for those programs and buying a house for $700,000. Most towns are regionalizing their veteran services. They're reducing them down to part time. I know Walpole and Midway share, there's a, just north of us, several towns share. We don't want to do that. We want to keep the position full time because it deserves it here in Oregon and giving it some meaningful additional duties, helping out with really an important area in the, uh, the human services functions. And, um, we did budget next year for some additional part time VSO hours. I think that'll be Teddy coming back after retirement for us, probably putting in 10, 12 hours a week, which will be great for the transition for whoever the new VSO ends up being, but also make sure that we're maintaining a, um, additional hours. And we'll actually have a surge capacity that we didn't have in the past. Somebody goes on vacation, we can now pull Teddy out of more retirement and have him work even more hours.
All right, I will now open things up for questions, comments from the board.
Oh, you can go to my, it's, sorry. So I'm, I'm going to just push back a little bit on this, just because it was pretty fast, this. I know that you had talked about this strategic plan, and then we probably didn't talk about it for a while. Not saying that's your fault or our fault. But, you know, in, in between the time that we last met, we get notice that Ted's retiring, we get notice that there's a new job description, and since then to now, the job, it's already closed, right? So like, it feels that we didn't have any kind of input into this process at all. I don't know if you guys feel like that, or if you feel like that, Madam Chairman, but it just. And I'm, again, I'm not saying that it's the wrong approach, don't take it that way. But, you know, when you mentioned other towns are doing this, uh, and these are the trends, like it would be good to, to, to get more information about that, you know, as opposed to just saying it. And, um, you know, I'd like to hear more about the process of creating the job description and, and why certain things maybe were taken out. And in this position now, it's not going to report directly to you, correct?
Sure, yeah, the Health and Human Services Director will be the day to day supervisor.
And I, and I, you know, not that I'm opposed to you having less reports, because I think you do have a lot of direct reports. But I just feel like this is something that, um, we didn't have any input on. And, um, or even just like getting, uh, Mr. Mulholland's input, you know, in, in this kind of environment, on maybe what the benefits would be to changing this. And I know that you're not doing this, you know, just to save a couple bucks, and we're not implying that. But I, I just feel like personally, and also with the chairman not here tonight either, you know, we didn't really have an opportunity to weigh in. I don't know how others on the board feel about that, but I, I feel like it's sort of like a prestige position in that there's, there's a lot of history to it and there's a lot of sensitivity to it, you know? And I just would have liked to have seen maybe a more collaborative process. Not even talking about the applications that came in. Maybe we got great applications, I, you know, I don't know, but, um, that's just how I feel at the moment. But I would, I would like to hear how other people feel.
Well, I guess I'm the same thing, because I didn't know until the last day or two that he retired, but congratulations and enjoy retirement, go golf and fishing. So I guess, in a nutshell, we're trying to put this under a different position with a different person?
It's a change to that job title.
Yep, and that somebody else would take over his duties. Like his responsibilities.
Ninety percent of the responsibilities are staying the same. And the additional duties went from being parking and other things to coordinating the human service functions, the Human Service Functions, parking and the Transfer Program.
So, but we're not, we're not hiring a Veterans Agent right now, right?
We are. This person's the Veterans Agent.
Who is it? Do we know?
No, we haven't hired, we haven't, we, it just closed a couple days ago, so no, we haven't hired someone.
Oh, okay. I'm kind of on the same with Matt. I mean, this is, the Veterans are a very important part of this Norwood community, and are we gonna, are you gonna make the decision? Are we screening them?
It's, if somebody wants to sit on the panel, we'll have a panel of five. Be more than happy to have a selectman sit on the panel.
Yeah. I'll do it if they don't, or Matt can do it, either one of us, or somebody else. But I think that it's a, it's a big position for the Veterans, and I think that we should have a little bit of input of, of the timeframe. And I don't think we should rush into it right now. There's no real reason to rush into it, Mr. Lane, so.
Well, we will have to fill the role when Mr. Mulhill...
Yeah, he's leaving soon.
Yeah. There's an end date.
No, I know, but at some point, a week or two, that's, where the ball keeps rolling, what without them? I mean, at some point, when, when this five-piece, when is a five-person
I mean, we'll start interviewing, probably, probably next week, the week after, we'll start interviewing. Teddy retires this month, so we're gonna want to move quickly, which is why it was posted several weeks ago, timed, so that it would be closing right around with his retirement. He's also gonna sit in with us on the, on the panel.
Okay. We didn't get a notice on the posting, did we?
I don't know that we normally send postings.
I don't, I don't think we normally do. That would be...
Oh, okay, I didn't know. Okay.
Fifty, eighty job postings a year.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I mean, we'll have to assume that thing with representing the board, but it's kind of a, an important one. It's kind of, seems like it's moving quickly, but, you know, it's up to the board, whatever the board decides, Madam Chairman.
Well, I don't know if it's up to us. I don't know what kind of authority we have, right?
I mean, it's the manager's appointee. And we went through our normal internal process that we, we've gone through for any other job description or job change. We go through the Personnel Board. There's a whole process there. Job descriptions are created, they're rated.
So the Personnel Board helped write the job description?
They, they grade a position, and they offer input on the job description. HR prepares the job descriptions based on what's out there in the, or comparable positions.
But the Personnel Board then saw it?
Yes. Yeah, ultimately, that's what they use to go through their grading process and decide where it falls on our grade scale.
I had a question, unless Mr. Plasko wants to ask any questions before I...
I'll go ahead.
Was there, so this, this concept, you know, started before I was on the board. And I did try to spend a little time digging back, you know, through the history, trying to find old discussions on it. One of the questions I had was, under, when I was looking through the laws around it, there's a provision where adjoining towns can essentially do the equivalent of a shared service pact with other towns for an agent. Was there a reason that we didn't take that approach, as opposed to filling the role with these ancillary tasks?
Sure. Great question. We actually, about a year and a half ago, Teddy and I spent quite a bit of time working with Walpole, and they share with Midway or Medfield. We just take a different approach to Veteran Services. They were looking to drive the cost as low as possible. They didn't want full-time office coverage. We've never done that, and we're not looking to drive the cost down on the position. We want full-time coverage. We also maintain a full-time admin in that office, which a lot of towns don't do. So what they're looking for out of the model and what we do just wasn't going to, just wasn't gonna work. A couple of the other towns just north of us, like Meadham and some of their towns around, I think Dedham, maybe with them, Dedham may not, they're already in a large regional arrangement, and the state looks at total population and total case count. We probably could have done that, but we want a full-time body here is really the reason. It just didn't look like it was working. And then, the challenge is, let's say you jump in with, I'm gonna pick on Dover, and I don't know what their needs are, and they say, well, we think we need somebody four hours a week. Okay, so they're now gonna pay 5% of the salary, and we're gonna drive over there, be there five days a week, but they can come to Norwood the rest of the time if they need them. Just probably not working for us and our model. It's something we wanted to keep in-house. I think if the state were looking, trying to actually do it regionally and building it out, you'd probably get something better, because one of the problems a lot of towns run into is your VSO leaves, and then you're sort of SOL. You have nobody there to fill that process in. Having Teddy at least come back sort of 10 hours a week is gonna make sure that we've got some continuity there. But other towns, it's, they go, and then they have nobody, and then it falls under neighboring towns, where people say, well, just call Norwood, let them help you out. Call, you know, this town will let them help you out. Big believer in regional services, but this just didn't seem to be...
That's why I was surprised.
Didn't seem to be that there was a model that matched what we wanted to do with it.
The, also, a couple of questions I had had around, you know, the appointing authority aspect of it. I did find the language around appointing authority for our town, having selectmen, it's listed as the board of selectmen may appoint an agent, as opposed to a shall or will. So I don't know how that factors into things as well, in terms of if somebody else is appointing it, it's fine.
General, the general law, if you read it, the whole thing, seems to conflict with itself. Like, if you go to Section 3, what is it, 3A or B, whatever they call it, that makes it sound, really sounds clear that you have to have an agent, and yet, the very first section says you may, which doesn't indicate you have to.
But who's appointing it as a may?
We have a charter, which is what defines the appointing authority. But to Mr. Plasko's point, nowhere else does it say may.
Right.
So that's why, it's like, it says you may, and it's like, no, usually it says shall, and then your charter controls it unless that provision of the law actually states, you know, absent, it's, that word may appears nowhere in statute but there, which is very interesting.
And so our charter says you're the appointee.
Correct.
It says we may appoint, selectmen may appoint, right? Mr. Sad. Mr. Manager, is there a number of how many veterans we service in Norwood?
So that's, that's a hard number to come up with. We have the Chapter 115 Program, which is the state aid to low-income veterans. That case count, the number of active cases, is probably around 30 or 35. But you can't say that that's what we serve. There are a lot of people come in for an informal chat, they come in for a council, they may look for help with something that they're not on the 115 Program. We don't do like a formal intake, where we say, okay, Mr. Sad came in, and we put him in the system, and I gotta call over the VA and help them out.
My only thought is, we own the, we, we control the VFW. What if we got them involved to help out as far as with our secretary and them meeting down there, or them, because they know most of the people that are the V...
That's what Teddy does.
Well, I know, I was just thinking...
And that's what the V, sorry, that's what the VSO does. I mean, that's the outreach they do to vet, remember, the VSO has to be a veteran. So they're either a member of, or they attend the different veterans groups in any given town. That's how they maintain that connection.
Well, I'm thinking like a Tony Esco, or Steve Esco, especially Steve, either one that's a veteran, and let them be like a stipend to be affiliated or associated Veterans Agent from the town in Norwood, be in, be in at the VFW, working with our secretary.
I mean, are you suggesting we should be adding more stipends and more positions?
Well, if we're paying the first one, now he's leaving, and now we got a second one that they could use the money down there, and it might be a good mutual agreement, because all your veterans are down there. I mean, not a lot of them.
I mean, it's probably an ideal place to recruit from.
Yeah.
Like, I think the recruiting and making the visibility happen down there is definitely something that can be done, like, if we're looking for services to do outreach.
Another, another part of reading the, the sections of the general law 115, is actually a spot where it references the fact that the selectmen can do the job, but we can't do the job and be a Veterans Agent, because we don't meet the qualifications. So the whole thing just doesn't make sense. On the, the whole discussion, though, I think we may have all, maybe taken this too lightly, and now it suddenly seems to be upon us, because we have discussed, or the managers mentioned, is kind of working on this concept. We did ask for more information, but told him not to do anything until he came to us. It's in the budget. You budget it accordingly.
Correct.
So we've already approved it through the budget process. We just didn't really pay attention to what we were doing, if you will, relying on, you know, we took that section at the time, what the budget was and what's in it, but without thinking, what are we doing down the road here? The fact that we're combining the Veterans Agent, it's not gonna be in the form, in the form it used to be, you know. So that's kind of been done. The charter says that the manager shall be the administrative head of all departments of the town, and in charge of the conduct, which the general laws, by this, is by the general laws and by this act placed upon the selectman, except for those specifically mentioned. And the only ones specifically mentioned are the town clerk, the town accountant, the town treasurer, those positions, and the manager himself. So the general laws put this authority to the selectman, but our charter passes it on to the manager. The other thing that is a concern, that we like to be involved and know what's going on, is organization, reorganization. And that seems to have, as I said, kind of went a little on the loose, just generally mentioned. And that says that the manager will organize, continue or discontinue such divisions or departments from time to time, as may be determined by vote of the selectmen, or in the absence of such a vote, as may be determined by said managerial manager, to be required for the official conduct of his office. So he never took a vote, but, but it's not that it wasn't known, if you will. It's been mentioned just in the budget, so on and so forth. So he moved, my, my take on it, he's, he's moved along with the fact that he can, can make that determination based on the learning of the clause. What I think we need to do is accept where we are, but come up with a procedure that we want to see the general manager follow when doing reorganization, and, and put it in writing, and vote it, and approve it, and give it to the manager, because we do oversee him and do give directions. So he still has the authority, but within the direction we've given him for doing that. So next time, he would actually say, I want to do this position, here's what the job description's gonna be, here's how this is gonna work, here's how that's gonna work, and we can vote, we approve that or we don't, or decide to take no action, and then he can move along, as he thinks is efficient, as the charter says. But we're kind of already past most of all that now.
Activity like that helps newer board members especially, because it's easier for us to flip back and go, ah, yes, the previous term, someone approved this here, was their discussion around it, here was the formal thumbs up. So it makes it a little easier to find, whereas otherwise, you're sort of picking through, trying to find about the timeframe that you think it got talked about.
We kind of, we kind of did that, maybe even not as formally as I'd like to see it, but we kind of did that with the CFO. We had a town accountant, manager wanted to add the CFO. We talked about it, he presented it, presented what the job description would be and everything, we approved, and we approved him during the interviews and all that, and we basically just blessed it by appointing that individual that he recommended as our accountant, because the charter says we appoint the accountant. So we could do the same thing here. He finds the person for that overall position, who is also qualified to be Veterans Agent, and we name a veteran agent, you know. But I'm not even sure that we have to do that, because I think that falls on the manager anyhow, under that clause I read earlier. Just my thoughts. I think it could have been by all of us handled a little differently. I don't see anything terribly wrong with it. I think it is in quotes with the charter and the laws, and it's already budgeted and everything, so it kind of, kind of is what it is.
Yeah. The only other question I had was, just from a strategy standpoint, the, and not having participated in the prior planning around it, the extra duties that were sort of marrying with the role under its new form, when we're out, you know, seeking, I mean, the, the hope is you get someone that wants to stay in there forever, essentially, right? That we get the next Teddy, right?
So slowly, that's not happening more and more, but that's always the goal.
So do we feel that the duties that we're combining with veteran service now, as opposed to parking tickets and such, that we're gonna be capable of finding folks that sort of operate in both lanes? For example, in the private sector, I deal sometimes with, we have roles that are, we have, we get lucky, we happen to have an employee that has talent in this area and this area, but it turns out that finding people in the market to actually have both of those qualities becomes challenging, and we end up not being able to find someone that has enough of each column, when we lose that sort of unicorn employee. So do we have any concerns that we're gonna find someone that maybe they're gonna index really high in the Human Services column, but not as much in the Veteran, or vice versa?
Sure. So that's always the first step, when you start getting applications in, and we look at it and say, did we get what we're looking for? Do we need to change something? And if we, you know, Teddy and I talked in particular, we talked with Stacy, and we talked with the chair, and we said, if we're not seeing what we want, we'd probably try a second time to go out, and then we would have to revert if we're not seeing what we want. Fortunately, just a cursory look of the applications, there's at least a handful of them that are phenomenally qualified.
Good.
Much more so than I thought we would find. There's a couple of them really that have that. I think two of them have the graduate degrees, they have experience, and they have to be veterans, of course.
Yep.
They have experience in not just having been a veteran, so it's not just, hey, 25 years ago, I did this for a year, and that's it, but either recent service or service with veterans-related organizations, social work service with veterans-related organizations. We've gotten a really good applicant pool. See, at least based on a preliminary scanning of them, it's gonna be one of those hard decisions.
Great. So this was for discussion. I don't believe we have to take a particular action on this tonight. If we do think about having a member of the board interested in participating in the panel, do we have interest?
I, no, I was gonna say, I mean, I, you know, I think I've made it clear, I, I didn't feel comfortable, this moving so quickly. You know, but it is what it is, I guess. You know, we've already got job descriptions. You say we've got good ones, I believe you. You know, but just, just uncomfortable.
Okay.
But I would say if there is a process for looking at applicants, you know, maybe getting someone from the Veterans Community would be helpful to be involved with the process, someone maybe other than Ted, you know, that would be my suggestion.
If they do have to come back, because they, like you said, you try, you don't quite find the right candidates, they don't make it through the process, and you do have to come back, would we want to suggest then, at that point, coming back to us with, hey, these are the changes that we've had to make, because we're not finding the right kinds of applicants, and sort of start the structure of, getting the vote taken?
Sounds like that, yeah.
At least based on the applications that have come in, it looks good. I would hate to, I mean, you're right, could everyone withdraw, and then we get a look at it again? There were a handful of strong ones. I think that's sort of the bridge you cross when you, you come to it.
And I think to, to Mr. Plasko's point, you know, establishing a process for something like this, where maybe Human Resources comes in, and they show, these are whatever it's doing, maybe a memo from the Personnel Board, these are things, just to sort of make us comfortable with, with these decisions, because I just feel like we didn't have any say in anything. It's just done.
Charter does say under our direction, so we can direct them.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but we didn't, we didn't have an opportunity.
Possibly want to set up a process, yeah.
I mean, I hope it works out. And like you said, maybe there's great applicants, and it's a smooth transition, it's all good, but anyways, I'll stop talking.
It's okay. And if there's a particular action, unless you want us to report it tonight around...
Want to direct the manager to include a member of the board, or a resident veteran to advise him on the appointment?
We can do that.
I would second that motion.
Great.
Yeah, I'll do it if you want, just right now.
Can you just, if you could, just, consider on the motion, pick somebody tonight, just so we don't wait for September, and then I...
Yeah, I would, no, I'd be happy to make a motion to submit Mr. Sad as a representative from the board for the interview process.
I can handle it, thank you.
Would we need a separate motion for someone from the Veterans Community?
I'd also want to do a friendly amendment to the original motion.
Yeah, and a friendly amendment.
Board member being Mr. Sad, and a member from the community, a veteran.
Veterans member from the community.
Appointed by the chairman?
Sure.
Sure.
We'll put some work on Bob, since he's not here.
And have to act quickly, though, so we can't wait for a board meeting to make appointments or anything. Not that involved, it's one, one task, not a committee.
He's just on Cape Cod, he can do it.
Yeah, not that far away.
All right.
No enemies watching.
Motion with amendment made. Second, who was our second on that? If it's made by Mr. Plasko, seconded. Do we need to resecond the amendment? This is where my parliamentary procedure falls down.
Either way.
Complex motions.
Just make sure that young lady knows.
All right. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, unanimous. All right. So let's move down to, all right, another conversation. We've sort of touched on this already in the meeting, but let's talk 3.15, Park Usage Rules and Regulations. So in your packet, you have a copy of the park rules and regulations, as well as the application that comes in. When we get down to that. And essentially, we, we've been getting requests that we're all sort of, oh, does this qualify? Oh, should we, shouldn't we?
Yeah, we've, so we've been getting more requests for larger use of the Common and Chapel Street. I know Chapel Street, and there's, I think a few either were or will be on your agenda, for the churches in the neighborhood use them quite a bit. And we had one that ended up being 75 people, 100 people. So these aren't the small yoga class that we also sort of weren't okay with. They're, they're larger uses. Same thing with the Common. Wondering if the board would be interested in seeing some recommendations, that maybe we do start charging for some of these uses, maybe just a general common use fee of a small fee, and then maybe over a certain amount, we'll charge more. Not that it's a effort to make money, but we're seeing more and more of these, they're taking time, and they're using the parks.
Right.
And that's great. The parks are there for, for general use, but when you start saying that, hey, we're having 75 people at this event, and it's not a town event, it's a, you know, there's a, even if there's not necessarily a direct cost, like we're not adding staff or whatnot, it's, it's use of the grounds and use of the facilities. It's more about the principle of the matter than, I think, anything else. But wanted to sort of throw it out there and see if there's any, if the board feels it's a problem, if you want to see any recommendations, if you want us to bring something back, particularly around whether we want to start having some sort of a charge, or look at what and when we're charging.
So I'll just start off, if everybody doesn't mind, because one of my thoughts around the topic is, at some point, someone described the Common as the town's living room. But that's only true if people are living in it, because sometimes it gets treated a bit more like the town's special side room, where you take tea, and the furniture's covered in plastic, and no one's allowed to use it, because it's special.
In Massachusetts, we call it a parlor.
Yes, a parlor, the town parlor. And so, on one hand, I want to err on the side of people living in the Common, right? Not literally living, but just, you know, performing the activities of being in the community, enjoying the public space. On the other, like you say, we don't want that to take the form of all-know. There's so many people queued up to do these sort of pseudo-private events, that you can't actually use the space, because you're elbow-to-elbow with these other events. And so trying to find the right balance between those things is sort of my overall goal. So with that said, I'll take comments and questions.
I think we created the monster as far as the overall use, of the, overuse of the Common, because once you do it, everyone sees it happening, and they don't know to ask for anything else. So...
So, I personally would like to see a, I don't know how we're going to do it, just have staff some bring something back, look at the current park permit regulations, down the common regulations, think about costs, I mean, because I think we definitely should be adding that in, and make a recommendation back, so we can, you know, consider all those things, but I think it's time to consider, and I think we need to look at, trying to straighten this out.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'm also in favor of us creating something that has a lot of consistency, so that people understand if there's something that's being denied, that it's easy to follow the logic of, oh, that one didn't work because this reason, this reason, this one, this reason was clearly laid out, so then the next one isn't confused about, how come they did and how come they can't? So that's definitely beneficial. And also, an opportunity for, if there's any items on this list that we feel are sort of either outdated, or maybe not serving us in the best way, we can revisit those as well as part of that second look. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Sad?
Over the years, being in the JCs and being involved with town, everybody hated to see Chapel Street being not used. We can throw any type of use at that park, whatever it is, it's just an asset to the community, that's all.
Okay, absolutely.
I know a couple of the uses that we see more now, like the yoga classes and the real estate classes outside or wherever, we never saw those before the pandemic.
Right.
So part of this, we haven't really looked at the regulations, and we don't get 20 of them a month, but it's probably time to look at it and say, you know, commercial uses, even when they're free, are generally not going to be allowed, is something that I think the board, just consistent with the number of votes, has done. You know, we like weddings, but maybe it's sort of a small weddings, if we, you know, you can't be too hard and fast, if you say 25 people and they say 27, that's fine, but we, I remember a couple of years ago, we got one where there was 80 or 100 people, and we just said, this is a little, that's, that's an event, that's a large event on the common.
And there's also some of it I want us to think carefully about, how we're dealing with, say, as we want people to increase walking and using alternate forms of transportation to lower traffic and to lower emissions, make sure that our policies support that. In some cases, we're prohibiting, say, you know, skateboarding, but it's like, but that's, that's somebody not using their car. And so, you know, or then you get into things like, well, are the little razor scooters technically a skateboarder, or are they technically a scooter, or it is or isn't that, like, I want to kind of get away from some of that as well.
I think we probably can, I mean, to that point, back when skateboarding was a, only punks are going to come in town and skateboard, I think that regulation is dated, scooters were before people actually used, the people use electric scooters now, and you're right, I think we'd want to encourage that. I think we even say no bikes, but we have bike racks downtown, so we can look at some of those, those rules as well. I mean, I've sometimes swallowed my thought as we get back with a, sort of a memo recommending a number of changes, and the board can kind of pick through them and say, yeah, you know, we like this, we don't like this, or this makes sense, and try to come up with a little bit more information that we can maybe give an applicant to say, well, here's, generally these are approved, generally these are not approved, you're always welcome to ask the board, it's ultimately the board's discretion, but, you know, if you want that wedding at 200 people, it's just not, probably not appropriate for the, for the town common. We would lease Memorial Hall out for the right price, but not necessarily appropriate for the town common.
Want to add in a form of a motion? Move that we ask the general manager of staff to review the park and town common rules and regulations, to update them, include a potential or possible charges for the use, and to report back.
Okay.
With recommendations.
Sounds good.
Suggestions.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Ling. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, let's get to item 3.16, this is looking at the preliminary special town meeting warrant, also for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just submitting to the board a list, Alex is here for our next item, but just submitting to the board preliminary what's been submitted for the fall town meeting, we had sent out a memo much earlier in the year requesting all departments to get anything they believe needs to be on the warrant, and as you know, I'm sure something else will come in to us by the end of last week, and this is just a list of what has come in.
Great. Do I have any discussion on?
Do you have any, this is what came in as of this memo, do you have any indication or anything else now may be coming in?
No, as long as the Verizon easement is on there, this is, as of today, what we believe has come in.
Because I'm kind of, I know, maybe it's because the time is too short, but I'm also concerned that the planning board's not coming back with something having to do with ADUs.
So I think they're, they're waiting, my understanding, they're waiting for HLC to DHCD to issue their regulations, because the law was passed mandating ADUs, but HLC still has to issue regulations, so until those regulations come out, I think it might render any bylaw, I don't want to say moot, but it would make sense to wait for those regulations.
You'd have to see the section of the law again, but I think the regulations have to do with just a certain part of it. My concern is that the law became, I believe, effective immediately, what, didn't have the preamble to be immediate?
I believe that it becomes effective after immediately.
I think the whole bond was immediate.
I don't know, I don't think the housing was, we can look into that.
Yeah.
I would call it a soft close to the warrant, if they need to bring something forward, certainly they can, but I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're waiting for HLC to come out with the regulations before we then go pull a board a bylaw that we then might have to change. And I think as the board knows, you know, we, our 3A zoning has been approved, but HLC still has to actually approve the approval of our zoning.
Yeah, that's something different than the 3A.
Sure.
Okay.
And we can ask the planning board if they'd like to submit something.
Like I say, my concern is if it's already in effect, if it had the emergency preamble, which was part of the barnville, the whole barnville, as far as I know, had that preamble, then it's effective, and some of the things in it, we may not want, that are within our few things that they gave the town control over, such as the size. So my concern is that tomorrow, I can go get a building permit, and the building permit, building inspector, I don't think would deny it if I'm right, about it being effective today, because the town's under a bylaw, the only thing you could look at is the law, and the law, so now I could build 900 feet instead of 700 or 750 that we had at the last town meeting, as one example.
I think you're absolutely right, I think we'll face that no matter what, if you're able to do it now, you're able to do it now, and by the time we get a bylaw on for a late October town meeting, and then it's taking effect, I mean, it's January anyway, so you've got six months to do it no matter what, best case scenario.
The timing stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. We will double check and make sure if they can get anything to come forward.
Thank you.
Any further discussions?
We can get the board out shortly, a very early draft yellow sheet, that's more just a little bit of explanation, but this was literally the whole point, so what we think is what's been submitted to go on.
Did we have an interest in closing the fall warrant at this time?
No, because we, because we don't actually have to legally for any reason, and once we do, we're done with it.
Okay. All right.
I can contribute that it will become effective February 2nd of next year.
February 2nd of next year, February 2nd of next year is when it becomes effective, so we have some time.
That gives us some time, thank you.
And hopefully HLC gets the regulations out soon, so.
All right, so, nothing further on that one. I believe that Mr. Sad might have an interest in 317, so until he gets back, do we want to skip down to starting 3.18 in the meantime?
Yes, I think so, 318 is just a recommendation on it that we table item four, the individuals who brought it forward, there's just some confusion about the current regulations, what's changing, there's construction going on in the street, just would like more time to review with engineering and some of the folks on the street.
Okay, so that's a change.
Number four you're talking about.
Number four, yeah, just recommend tabling it.
Tabling the whole thing?
What's that again?
Tabling the whole thing.
No, tabling just recommendation four, one, two, and three are good to go.
Okay. Mr. Sad, just to catch you up here, we were waiting for you in case you had special interest in 3.17, so we skipped it down to 3.18 for a moment?
Oh, thank you, yep.
So, we were talking about the fact that the recommendation is of those four items listed under 3.18 to table number four, because there's still more to be done with that, but we can go ahead and look at if we're interested in taking items one through three, taking the recommendations from the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee.
Yep, I think that street's going to be really tight for the church, new addition, and just, you know, they should have made the sidewalk narrow, that's another story for a different day, but, yep, it works.
Do I have any other comments or questions?
Want to approve one through three and table four?
Second.
And second by Mr. Ling, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. All right, so that's approval on the recommendation with one through three with tabling of number four. So now we'll move back and item 3.17 to discuss the change order relating to the Cooper Park. And, Mr. Manager, I believe we have a special guest to talk with us about it, great?
Yes, thank you, we have Alex Jones here from the Planning Department. Mr. Sad had reached out to me and recommended some changes to the Cooper Park design, and we've aired a cost estimate as well, I mean, just for the engineering design alone, as well as just some of the challenges that a change would be, would require this late in the year. Alex, you want to go through those, or you want me to go through them, or?
Yeah.
If you want to come to that.
Absolutely. I apologize for not providing more context in my memorandum, just to sort of set the table here, Sludman Sad, myself, the landscape architect for the project, along with some residents of St. John, have had a discussion last week that was brought about because these residents were concerned about the parking at the end of St. John, potentially involving some trees being cut and losing that privacy buffer between their home and the park and parking and so on. And so at that time, and please feel free to jump in, Sludman Sad suggested that rather than installing the parking, which is closer to these residents' home than the existing cul-de-sac, that the cul-de-sac be kept and, and used for, for additional parking, along with potentially some gravel around it. So, I did reach out to our engineering team at that time to ask them what they thought this change would involve from an engineering perspective. Hannah, Hannah, wow, her last name is escaping me.
It's all good.
Who's our landscape architect, it's probably on here, did suggest having an additional public meeting if that change were to be made, because the outreach process initially that led to the concept design and then the engineering design was fairly extensive and included a significant amount of comments from, from residents of those streets about actually trying to keep the parking available, particularly for people with access needs, like wheelchairs, but not having it become parking, excess parking for things like the funeral home on Washington Street, for example. So that was a suggestion that she made. It would also need to go back to the Conservation Commission as an amendment to the order of conditions that they issued, and of course, since it's conservation land, they would also have to approve of the change in the design themselves. And it would have to go to the planning board for site plan review, which is triggered by changes in, in parking for any sort of business or site in town that has seven or more parking spaces, but the current proposal, rather, not the proposal, the current plan shows 11. This board that I have with me is from 2001, when we wrapped up our initial concept design, has, has been sort of, this body has seen this, and many others in town have, at farmers' markets and at Norwood Day, and this concept design that we've had for years does actually show the five parallel parking spots along St. Paul and St. Joseph, and that, like connecting strip, and then three at the end of St. Joseph, and three at the end of St. John, which is, in fact, what is being built. So that has, has remained essentially the same over those, over these last three years, and been presented to town meeting and so on. So, whether there's a public meeting or not, it would need those, those two board approvals, and the estimate for the engineering change would be in the realm of $13,000 to $16,000 if that were something we wanted to do. I haven't heard from the, from the contractor, what it would cost as a, as a contracting change on their park, so I, I can't speak to that. I, there have been some other options that have floated, sort of addressing the initial problem of, you know, these trees that are providing some privacy now to, to the residents being cut down, including extending the roadway by about 10 feet, so that the parking spots are just moved slightly into the park, a little bit further, as well as potentially including some additional buffer zone, not buffer zone, but buffer plantings, whether in the park or in the right-of-way that is in between the park property and the residential of others. So, those are some other options that we're considering that seem like they would have a less impactful price tag. Thank you.
Anything further on that, Mr. Manager?
No, just, I mean, we, we took a look at it, our recommendations at this point, it would be very costly and time-consuming, and possibly kick the project into another year, just probably a little bit too late with the project, can make any changes, but that would be our recommendation.
I have a question about the, the screening plantings concept, would that change any timing?
No, all of the plantings that are going in, so there's a number of plantings that are going in at the park at this fall, because fall and spring tend to be the best times for, for planting trees. So, we would essentially be able to add that to our, our order, and the horticultural subcontractor would be able to locate, maybe even recommend those plantings and have them in place to be planted in October.
Great, thank you. Further questions?
I guess this is initiated by my, the calls I get from the neighbors down there, it just doesn't make sense to me that we take a beautiful park, cut most, at least a third of the trees down, make wide trails, cut a lot of the trees along somebody's resident that's been there and past chairman of the South Norwood Committee, and that's been there for 55 years probably, and put a new, as Bill would say, a new circle with granite, rip it up, and then put three squats along this person's house. It doesn't make sense, I'm not here to go to six meetings or 10 meetings, I've got other things to do here. And it just doesn't make sense that the town, our people, manager, assistant manager, the people in your committee, think of these things, we're trying to save the trees, we're trying to make this park a little park, but not cut a swath of trees down. You go down there, there's a swath, it's like, you know, the Gaza Strip, this is unbelievable. I saved that park. These people in South Norwood, that area, they deserve a little more than this. You know, for us to say, we're going to put a cul-de-sac in, not a regular one, but that's been there for 50, 60 years as a kid, I played down there, for us to rip it up, take the granite out, extend the granite in the circle, and remove a circle to put up a dead-end street, doesn't make sense to me.
I can clarify that there's not granite around the cul-de-sac, the granite stops right around where the fire hydrant stops.
Yeah, towards Patty's house going down.
Yeah.
But it just doesn't make sense to me why we just can't leave it there, put some crush bank, pipe the water over there and over there, because there's no, there's no storm drains on any of those streets, and save the town taxpayers money. This is a huge, I had to say word mistake, but it's a huge expense for the taxpayers to put that road down and now rip it up a year later. This is for a park, this is in Fenway Park, or the Boston Common, this is a park that's named after, we, we fought for that park through the Buck Enterprises and Ernie Buck and Mike Clemmie, a lot. It cost us a lot of money down in South Norwood, and they want to rip the trees down along the people's houses? Somebody's going to be home. This is something that just doesn't happen overnight. And you've got, you know, the town hall, people in this building have to think of these people down there. They have to think of, what's happening and the life in the ball field's right there now, coming into their, two or three decades. You know, so I know the cost is $15,000 and might delay the park opening by a six-month window, but this is, what's it going to cost to take that tire up, remove it and put it back and then not have a cul-de-sac? So an ambulance goes down there? They have to make a three-point turn of the middle of the road versus make a little circle? Business wouldn't run like this. This is not, I don't think it's acceptable.
Mr. Sad, if I could, just to be clear, you're right, businesses don't run this way. We're a public agency. May 20th, 2021, Public Outreach Meeting. June 29th, 2021, Public Design Meeting. July 20th, 2021, Update to BOS During the Regular Scheduled Meeting. July 29th, Final Design and Feedback Meeting, On-Site Outdoor Classroom. November 30th, 2021, Joint BOS and Conservation Commission Meeting. January 26th, 2022, CPC Meeting, CPC Public Hearing. Town Meeting, May 9th and 12th, 2022. May 19th, 2023, Design Walkthrough for Stakeholders. July 12th, 2023, ConsCom Public Hearing. All of these had nut butter notifications. August 24th, Site Plan Review Meeting at the Planning Board. Other outreach, there were lawn signs at this park, Elliott Park and Dean Park with links to a survey in summer of 2021. Farmers Market Tabling in the summers of 2022, '23 and '24, thanks to the Trails Committee, and tabling at Norwood Day 2021, 2022 and 2023. So this park has gone through an extensive review process by a number of our regulatory boards, all of our departments, as well as residents being notified numerous times in numerous meetings, and this is the final product. To say, let's just do it different, is basically saying, to heck with all that, which the question becomes, why do we bother with any public outreach? Because we need the public's input in what we're doing. So to come in at the end and say that, and I'm going to push back, I don't want you to assume that our staff don't think about their neighbors, that they don't care about residents. They do, which is part of the reason we do as much public outreach as we did. This is the very end of the process, to come in and say, well, we don't like it and let's change it. Sure, let's tell our other volunteers on boards and committees who have worked on this that their input doesn't matter, that their time doesn't matter, and all the residents who did show up to all is that their time, their input is irrelevant, because at the very end of the day, somebody just doesn't like it and wants to change it. And by the way, that $15,000 is for the engineering costs, Mr. Sad, meaning that the other changes are going to cost additional money. You're talking about saving taxpayer money. Sounds to me like that's spending taxpayer money on an already approved project that's gone through 58 different boards and committees in a dozen years.
With regard to money, through you, Madam Chair, if I may, the other big concern about this is that we do have grant funds. We've already used the Mass Trails Grant, which was $50,000 that went toward design. For construction, we have a $717,000 grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is a federal grant that's administered through the state. The timeline for that grant to be used is by the end of October. So I don't, that's what our grant agreement is that we signed. I don't know what happens if we don't complete the project. By then, I assume that it would just be that work after that date wouldn't be eligible for reimbursement. But that's a concern and that's in terms of the timeline for myself.
So a little bit, just to the manager's point, you ask, all these 58 meetings and everything that happened and nobody picked up, all these trees being cut down in the parking against the lady's house? Something's wrong.
So I can tell you that myself, the landscape architect and volunteers from the Trail Committee have walked that park and we personally flagged the most impressive trees in the park to make sure that the paths weren't planned through them and that work could go around them. There's some incredible trees on that lot, including like some three to four foot across cottonwoods. And the whole, the site that's over by Haas is mostly all Catalpas, but there's a few really gorgeous white and gray birches mixed in. And all of the engineering was done with these very remarkable trees in mind to make sure that it was planned around those trees. And there, as I mentioned, there is a planting plan for the fall so that native species will be going in in areas that are currently able to be replanted, that don't have as much canopy cover.
So these state engineers saw those prints and said, with all the meetings in early, we're going to take a swath of all these trails. I mean, it's like half gone, all the trees on there, half. That wasn't the intention of Bernie Cool Park or our intention to save it from the Buck group, but it just, it doesn't make sense to me that all these people missed having that parking right up against her fence, cutting all the trees or a portion of those trees along her lot line. So in the ball field lights come into that whole area now from the South Norwood, from the ball school baseball field. It just doesn't make sense to me to put up, and you knew the cul-de-sac was there. It could have been built around and engineered around the cul-de-sac. It just doesn't make sense to have a cul-de-sac put down a year, a year and a half later, rip it up, that cost, and they could have designed it around the cul-de-sac. All right? It just doesn't make sense to me.
I have, one of the questions I had around the trails is my impression is part of this work is going to be removing invasives as we're going, correct? Because we don't want those. We do want to backfill with things that do belong. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so, and that work has already started. Again, there's a horticultural subcontractor who's on the site who has been engaging in invasive management since the spring, including right by the, around the middle of the park, by the Naposet River, there's a large stand of knotweed that the main path that goes along the river actually goes through. And so they got in very early to knock back the knotweed using an herbicide so that all of that vegetation would die before the ground got disturbed essentially and to eliminate the risk of it coming up through the pathway. So they've been addressing the knotweed, they've been addressing the garlic mustard. In addition, yeah, in terms of trees, there have been some invasive trees that have been cut down. Tree of Heaven is one of the most noxious ones that is over in the Catalpa area that has been purposefully targeted for elimination. There are some invasive trees that we're not choosing to eliminate, including Norway maple and sycamore maple, which are throughout the site, but there are many, as Selectman Sad was saying, some gorgeous examples of those trees. There's one right over the classroom area that provides shade for that, like outdoor classroom. So it's not sort of a broad swath, take everything invasive, but invasive species have been targeted. Black locust is another non-native and aggressive tree that a number of them have been cut down from the site and those, black locust is actually very remarkable for being one of the hardest woods that grows in our forests. And so those are actually being saved for reuse in the nature play area in the nature classroom. So they'll be cut into essentially stumps for seats and those are being saved on site.
And the other question I had was, if you go with this planting screening plan, would that require us to, would basically, would that affect our grant timing?
No.
Great.
The plan that was accrued by the Conservation Commission, as well as the Planning Board, had a lot of flexibility in terms of where the plantings are going because we knew that there might be places, we weren't sure where the openings in the canopy would be essentially after the tree removal. And so there are some places that we already knew were being planted, like compensatory floodplain storage areas that had to be sort of like cleared out a little bit near the river. But then there's a number of other plantings that are already available to be sort of shuffled around throughout the site depending on where it seems most advantageous to put those, once the project has sort of begun to take shape. And we can certainly add to those with some additional funds that come from the, essentially the grants being sort of like added to the money that was allocated by town meeting. So we would end up sort of with less coming back to the town, but we do have those available potentially.
Great. I am not in favor of deviating significantly from the plan, other than I'm in favor of the screenings, things that don't impact the timing, because I'm very concerned about, I don't want to do anything that puts that grant money at risk. You know, it's not just time, it's also time, and then if we lose our grants, now what are we left with? Additionally, I'm not a fan of improving, of increasing impervious surface. We kind of need to be getting rid of every scrap of impervious surface that we can. In terms of parking, cars and traffic kind of work like water. They flow into whatever space you give them and the more space you give, the more it flows in. So any sort of nudges we can provide to reduce people using their vehicles and instead encourage them to take their bikes or to walk or to find carpooling or to do things that reduce traffic, I'm in favor of. So that's where I'm at with it. Do we have any, I want to make sure any videos, comments, has time?
Sure.
So Mr. Lane?
Thanks for being here, appreciate it. I wasn't sure what we were even talking about until I got a little more information. You know, as far as I'm concerned, the design is the design. It's been over a year since everything's been finalized and we don't have to go through all the meetings that we had, but you know, it is what it is. I think one of the issues that you had mentioned, the butter there at 34, feels like maybe the work has created, it's a little different from what they expected, but we could potentially help them out with some plantings, things like that, to provide more coverage.
We also are moving that particular individual, they were concerned about how close it was to their property. We're able to shift things down another six or eight feet and preserve some additional trees that are there, which we discussed on site.
And that's a right-of-way that we have, is that?
Correct. It's all, it's either town prop or your town right-of-way.
Okay. So I mean, I'm all for, I think, trying to improve their situation and whatever we need to do. Do we need to take a vote on that?
No, it's a simple, it's a fairly straightforward and small. I mean, it's maybe a $4,000, $5,000 change order of the product, project. All it is, is just sort of looking at on the site, moving these three parking spaces down, almost the equivalent of a parking space. There's a little small ridge of trees there that allows us to preserve a handful of extra trees. And we offered whatever plantings or fencing the neighborhood also like.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be here for that.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, and I think my only other thought, Mr. Sad, and you know, with all due respect, when you say things like, these decisions are made and we're not taking into account the people of South Norwood, you know, I don't agree with you. I think that there's a process and there was a lot of outreach, there was a lot of input. When you throw things out like that, you know, it makes me feel bad because I was part of this process and I think that the town does do a good job with their outreach. So, you know, I just want to make that clear. I do feel like this was a pretty transparent and thorough process. And if we can fix some things that maybe we didn't foresee, like we're talking about now with some coverage and things like that, but you know, we can't, we can't go back, you know, two years into the process and change things.
But also, Mr. Lane, you have to be cognizant of the ball field down there, that light's going all 10, 11 o'clock at night. Now the trees are gone, so all the lights are coming into the two and three decades. So it's not just affecting one residence, it's affecting all those residents on both streets. So it's just, it's just mind-boggling that we have a road, can we build around the road, engineer around the road that's already there that we just put in versus digging it back up?
We can if we're willing to spend more money, risk our grant money and introduce more impervious service.
Well, I know. Maybe we should have had cost storage there versus over a $1.5 million park that.
But I don't think we have to be clear about it.
No. But I just, I just don't agree with it. It's not, doesn't make sense to me.
Should have been a dog park.
I know that.
Always have a dog park.
The neighbors would have loved that.
So, so I guess this is coming very quickly. This is going to be done, you have the lockout?
Yeah. We do have two additional years on the plant contract to continue with watering and invasive management after that. It is, it will be done at the end of October. And that's in the contract.
So I didn't go to any of those hearings, didn't go to any of those meetings.
You went to the Board of Selectmen once.
I intensely kind of stayed out of that because a lot of other people very interested in it and I figured we were going in the general direction and going to be very happy with it in addition to the community. I will agree with Mr. Sad that I'm shocked at the number of trees in the town. I thought there's going to be, had the impression it was going to be more just some walking paths, a couple of clear areas like for that classroom you mentioned and along the river there, perhaps, but generally just kind of walking paths cleared and instead it's, those trees are gone. It's amazing to me how many are gone.
But Mr. Sad, I don't understand exactly what you're saying either. At the cul-de-sac, you want to add gravel around it? Are you trying to make it bigger?
No, just save the cost of ripping up and just put crushed stone around it, let the people park on the crushed stone, you're done. It's a done deal.
What's the cover plan?
Rip it up and make curtain all the way down instead of making a dead-end road.
Oh, there's no cul-de-sac intended at all?
No. So I can show you, essentially. So rather than a cul-de-sac, it would be three parking spaces facing toward ball field and essentially you'd be able to pull that reverse out.
If I drive all the way down there and those three parking spaces are filled, I have to back up and find a way on a very narrow street?
Yes.
Not a good idea.
It should have been a cul-de-sac or something.
Well, three of them.
I don't know about doing it at this point because of all the things that have been said, just the realistic, almost like we said earlier, it is what it is. Is it something that can be?
Well, no, you don't want to spend the money and then tear it up. I said, done later, when we don't have to worry about the timing and the federal funds.
You can always come back and look at it if it was a concern, but remember, it's parking at the end of a residential street for somebody who doesn't live in the neighborhood and wants to go there and just sort of walk through the park. How busy is it realistically going to be outside of summertime? I don't think you're going to see dozens of people trying to park down there. I could be wrong.
And the lane.
I drove down there the other night to try to see what was going on because it looks like a cul-de-sac now. So I was confused what we're talking about and yet it was blocked off. It might have been up one of the other streets.
Yeah, so that's invasive.
Yeah, I might have been, I might have been down there, but it was blocked off. And the same thing applies to all those streets, extremely narrow, people parking on it. And I had to try to back up till I found a clear enough driveway that I could turn around in a resident's driveway. And that's, we don't want to be promoting that people have to go in and out of other people's driveways all the time. So I do think that was an oversight, a missed opportunity that, Mr. Sad's absolutely right, that's not a great design. But those things happen too. I already commented on another project in town where some things I think were missed and whatever, but it's already too late to do much above it, so it is what it is. And hindsight is always great and being a Monday night quarterback always works out, but I know what I'm saying. I don't, I guess I accept the things that have been said about not trying to hold this up now. Has to go through too many, all these people you mentioned here have to legally go through this process?
Yeah.
We can't just change?
Oh, no. There's permits.
Even if it's not us, the Board of Selectmen, Conservation Committee, no one party that just goes, make that change?
So the, it's conservation land, so the Conservation Commission would have to want to make the change. And then they would need to revise the permit that they issued. So they would need an amendment to the Notice of Intent and to issue a revised Order of Conditions because almost all of the park is in riverfront area or floodplain or buffer zone to the rivers. So, and then one aspect that I haven't mentioned as well is that there's also a conservation restriction on the property that's held by Wildlands Trust.
Shall we add a do that, huh?
Yeah, you all signed it.
I can't remember that.
Yeah, so that's a requirement of using CPC funds for conservation purposes, is that you put a conservation restriction on it. So Wildlands Trust has also approved this plan and their interest, of course, is in the retaining the conservation value of the land. So they would also be very interested in the stormwater and so on. And they're tasked in perpetuity with making sure. And they're tasked in perpetuity with making sure that the land remains in conservation and doesn't have things like buildings put on it and so on.
Well, I think we will, I guess what it is, if it's wrong, shame on whoever was involved. We do whatever the whole long process is to try to correct it, if it corrects it is needed. We might find out it's not, but like that is what it is. I don't know.
And I'll just add the main entrance is St. Joseph Avenue. So the middle, which, which will retain that connection with St. Paul.
I also did want to take a moment to thank you and the staff for putting in the work to explore what could be done or what the ramifications if we had chosen to go with different suggestions, what the outcomes would be. I know that takes a lot of work to sort of dig in and sort of map out, okay, if this was different, what all does this mean and fallout? So I really appreciate that work. We very appreciate you coming in tonight to sort of walk us through.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
Do we have anything further on this item? Because if not, we can let them go. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Alex. Thanks.
So we had taken item 3.19 earlier, so that's already out of the way. That drops us down to Memoranda. I do have one item from Memoranda that I would like to call out, but I can save that to my agenda. So I would entertain a motion to file for these items unless anyone has something in particular from them to call out.
So move.
Second by Mr. Sad, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? I do not expect that to have been controversial, so I doubt Mr. Plasko will mind that we took that. And so why don't we drop down to the manager's update?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think I've spoken enough tonight. So nothing for the board, other than we do have an executive session at the close of tonight's meeting.
Correct. All right, let's start on my left. Start with Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick update, there is a public hearing on August 28th. The senior center, 6:30, Mr. Masuko, does that sound right? For the proposed project at 20 Vernon Street. There's a working group that's been meeting consisting of myself, Mr. Masuko, Ms. Dixon, Mr. Greeley, Ms. Sullivan from the FinCom, and probably forgetting some, Ms. Phelps from the Community Preservation Committee. Am I forgetting anyone, Tony?
Ms. Sullivan from the FinCom, did you mention her? Okay. So we've been working on producing sort of a, a lot of information for people to have. There's been a lot of questions that have come in on the project. And we just want to get as much background information as possible for this meeting. I assume that this will be ready to be distributed at the meeting, or certainly in time for town meeting. But I think a lot of the questions people are asking and could be answered through, through these documents that we're working on. So I would encourage anyone that has an interest in that project to attend the meeting. And that's the last thing I'm going to say.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we will swing back around, Mr. Sad.
A couple of things, Mr. Manager, I want to thank, and I've got a lot of calls on Dave Matthews, our brand new street sweeper. Everybody's thinking about it, and he's cutting the trees down where they hit the side of the machine. And I saw him behind the Venice cutting down the trees this morning, and I wanted to thank him for a great job. So pass it along that Dave's doing a great job and the other person with him on our brand new street sweeper. Couple of trees, Keene Pest Control up front, I mentioned at the last meeting, and Pond Street, dead trees.
Okay.
We can just get rid of them. And the other thing is parking at the junior high cell, and I know Matt's probably updated with, well, with kids, it's, it's kind of a mess up there. And with football season starting, is, is there a way for the ambulance to get in there if they need to?
Yes.
Okay.
Just sorry, what were those two streets again, in front of Keene Pest?
Keene Pest Control and Pond Street, there's a couple of dead ones off Pond Street. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Plasko, something else?
Personal agenda? I've got concerns, a lot of concerns around housing in town. And it's a big topic for a lot of people for, over the years, different times. And I think we need to somehow try to find a way to get a hold of it. I know I had a discussion with Chairman Donley about working on a strategic plan. One of the goals of the board maybe should be to look at coming up with a strategic plan. And I realize that that may run head and head, head to head with the master plan committee.
Yeah.
But I think it's important that we look into it, actually have deep discussions of all the ramifications and possibilities and bring them out and develop our own goal for the community and present that as well to the master plan and hope that gets adopted and we can push it. But you know, read the Globe, if you read the Globe yesterday, today, there's an article about how expensive it is to live in Massachusetts, eastern Massachusetts in particular. And they listed the towns with the highest rents. And based on a one-bedroom rent, there's the Republic of Cambridge, people of Republic of Cambridge, the city of Boston, and the town of Norwood. And that's scary, that's not, not a good, good thing, not a great goal. I'm also concerned with, you know, we went forward with the 3A. And we knew at the time, we had said that we should make sure before we go to town meeting that Executive Office of Housing. What is their name?
DHCD, I can't even get.
Yeah, we're calling DHCD, oh, it's right in front of me. DHCD had to, had to approve sections of it. And they had a whole process so that they could, and their recommendation was that you get that approval before you go get the town meeting vote. We've gone to town meeting, now the Attorney General has approved that bylaw. And we still haven't heard from the state, which presumably they'll approve things, but they couldn't. And town meeting was told that we had that approval. They were told, and I have the quote, that, that DHCD had signed off on it. And of course, from this letter from the Attorney General's office, we know that in fact it hasn't. My concern is that if they have a problem with the affordable housing aspect, I mean, I have problems with other parts of bylaw, we know that, I spoke against, but again, it is what it is. It's here, we've adopted the, communities decided they wanted it. But they decided they wanted it with this factor, with the, with the affordable housing. And if they adjust that in any way, now we have a bylaw on the books, that's not what we wanted at all. And I'm just concerned about that, the whole process and hope it turns out right. Kind of connected to that, kind of a nexus to that is, I was doing too much reading. I was reading the National Law Review, an article in the National Law Review. And the Supreme Court Sheet's decision cast doubt on the validity of Massachusetts inclusionary zoning regulations. So that could have quite an effect on 40A, 40B, 40I, which I myself have been promoting. But inclusionary zoning is part of that. And so we need to know whether the comments in this article, how much weight, I guess from council, we think this has. And if we have any, I can find out in any way what the state's plan is around this. Are there going to be changes in those laws so that they do meet muster? Or what's going to happen? Because we don't want to keep adopting laws that are going to have problems. And then like this one, maybe be surprised that we didn't get what we counted on. So it's, again, it's just forward information that I think, and this was a nine to nothing vote of the Supreme Court. So I think we need to have, I don't know how we break this down, how we do it, if I do it on my own. But I think we need to involve council and ask for advice on the legal status of these, so that we can move forward with any of them. Basically, in, in real short term, short explanation, the court's ruled that the, I think it's the 15th or the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, it talks about takings. And they've determined that the inclusionary zoning is a taking. So yeah, you want to do it, fine, but get ready to pay for it. And we're not looking to do that. So we need to get around that. And I think there are ways around it, but they have to be changed, they can't be left in the form they are today. And, and you can do inclusionary zoning where you require a certain percentage. But you can't just have a policy that says it'll be 20%, it'll be 25%. It has to be a study connected specific to each proposal, that it makes sense to require it. So that's how it looks on the surface anyhow. And again, we need some people giving us some direction and some input. So I'd like to have some conversations with council about that and see what, what he thinks of it or his firm thinks of it, if they have any advice for the communities, including ourselves, as we go forward with all these ideas of housing.
Would I be in favor of getting council's input on sort of the landscape? Because it shifts, sometimes it shifts south from under you. We want to make sure that we're setting ourselves up for success. In terms of whether, you know, we need to, you know, formally have council come in in this group or whether we prefer for Mr. Plasko essentially to do some like work just on your own. I don't have a particular preference. I can obviously try to, to run things down at the State House to a degree, see what I can find out. And I, I agree with, particularly with the Supreme Court ruling, understanding the ramifications or halo or ways to mitigate impacts is important. And I don't think we're going to be able to do that on our own without council's input. Would Ms. Dixon also maybe be somebody that could help us research that?
I think we can informally ask on council if his firm is prepared to opinion our. If not, he's doing sometime in September for something before the board. We can ask him that for that September meeting, if he can just be prepared to explain it and understand and.
He's coming in September?
Yeah, we have to have him come in for something with one of the bylaws, yeah, the, so he'll, that might be, it'll give him enough time to make sure he can, you know, properly look at it, do some research and get back to us. And we can just ask him if he can make that September timeline, he can come in and say, hey, this is what happened, here's the analysis. Hopefully by then, hopefully by then we've heard from HLC about 3A. And then maybe they're closer to regulations on ADUs, but he can maybe address that just as a policy matter, but.
And maybe I might just put some of it forward to him that I have these questions that if you could, I give it some thought. And maybe he can check with some people in his office, whatever. And when he's here in September, he could say, yeah, it's a real issue, we're going to have to look at it. But it's a complicated issue, so we all have to look at it. Or, no, you're wrong, it's really simple. And you misread it, but at least that'll put us at ease.
Sure.
Of where we do or do not have to go with the matter. Because I don't think it's something we want to ignore. Thank you.
So I, I would agree with Mr. Plasko, we can check with council, see if they can be prepared to sort of get into that topic with us the next time they come in in September, that I think will be one of the issues.
We will do that.
Thank you. All right, that brings it to my agenda. On my list, I only have two things. The first is one of my favorites, which is a reminder from our lovely clerks that the early voting process will be held in the town of Norwood for the upcoming state primary election. We have been notified by the Secretary of State's office that there will be a one-week early voting period for the upcoming September 3rd, 2024 state primary election. Early voting will begin on Saturday, August 24th, 2024, and will end on Friday, August 30th, 2024. The early voting will take place in Memorial Hall, the first floor of the town hall. And the hours are as followed, Saturday, August 24th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And this is the last day to register to vote for the state primary election. Monday, August 26th, Thursday, August 29th, 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Friday, August 30th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to the town clerk's office. You can reach them at 781-762-1240 at extension 6026 or by email at clerk@norwoodma.gov. And then my second reminder, since I don't think we have a meeting before this will happen, is reminding everybody about Norwood Day, which is currently, correct me if I'm wrong, September 7th is the time. And the buttons are already on sale. So get your buttons, you can obviously get them the day of, but get them early if you want to save a little bit. And so those are my two reminders. So with that said, we do have an executive session. So we will go into executive session and only coming out of executive session for the purpose of closing out the overall selectmen's meeting. But we will not be back on broadcast after the executive session. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Or do I need to first close this one?
No, just a motion. Purpose three.
Purpose of collective voting, what it asked me?
A second.
Second by Mr. Lane, all in, do we need vocal?
Yeah.
Yes, so vocal?
Aye.
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 And Chair also votes aye. So thank you everyone and have a great night.